Good afternoon. This is a legislative roundtable with our state representatives and our state senator here in the city of Largo. We are joined by the City Commission. I'm Mayor Woody Brown. I'd like to thank Senator Brandis and Representative Latvalla for joining us today, talking about important issues for our city and the state of Florida. We're going to, I'm going to ask Senator Brandis and Representative Latvalla to say some opening remarks if they'd like, and then we'll get started on the agenda.
Well, usually in the House, we let the senators go first. But I just want to thank, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners for inviting us. This is something I look forward to every year because not every city does this with the delegation. And so I look forward to hearing from each of y'all and as well as the, from the residents at Largo.
Yeah, great to be here. Look forward to the conversation.
Very good. You guys know our, one of the things that we did not too long ago was we started, we hired an intergovernmental relations coordinator. It's really been instrumental in us improving the relationship with the folks that represent us up in Tallahassee, the folks at the county, and frankly, the folks that run the cities nearby. So it's good, it's been good on a lot of different facets. We have a new intergovernmental relations coordinator since we had this meeting last year, and that's Mr. Chris Hawkes. And he's going to kind of take the reins for a little bit while we, our staff talks about some things that have happened in Tallahassee and some things that we're really looking forward to in the near future, so.
Well, thank you again to our distinguished guests. We know that your schedule is very busy, and we appreciate you being here to update us on not only 2022, but discuss the 2021 legislative session. Number of things were passed that affect cities, and we do have some staff members that will be talking about how they're responding, the opportunities that some of those pieces of legislation have created. Before we get going on that, I would like to acknowledge that Representative Nick De Segley and Representative Ben Diamond cannot be with us today, but they wanted to let everyone know that their door is always open, and they look forward to working with the city during the upcoming session. So for our city department presentations, the first one is going to be Laura Thomas, who will talk to us about the Resilient Florida Grant Program and electric vehicle charging stations.
For those of you that may not know, Laura's our sustainability administrator. That's for, you guys know, but that's for folks at home.
Thank you, yes. And thank you all for your time this afternoon. I'm happy to be here. I'll keep my comments brief, but wanted to speak to a couple of the efforts that went through the legislation this year and how they may potentially impact us and areas where we can continue to ensure alignment. So the first thing that I wanted to discuss was alternative fuel vehicles and infrastructure, specifically House Bill 839. As you know, Largo is committed to supporting our internal and community-wide transition to electric vehicles. We're engaging in conversations at the state and at the regional level to help develop things like the Florida Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Plan, and we want to make sure that we continue our efforts. We're certainly being more prescriptive in this effort internally. We do have that commitment to a 100% alternative fuel fleet by 2030, and we do want to also think of the best ways to support our community in making this transition as well. So we are exploring minimum requirements for charging station infrastructure at various new developments and trying to do that in a way that makes best fiscal sense for new development and while still encouraging adoption community-wide. So HB 839 specifically prohibits restrictions on fuel retailer production types, which is not reflective of the anticipated efforts of what we've been working on here at Largo or in our conversations with other communities. So there may be impacted, impacts on communities in unintended ways, but this bill specifically does not conflict with any of the conversations that we've had at the local level or with other municipalities at the local level. So we just want to make sure that we offer our support and continue dialogue when we think about how we can create these bills in a smart and effective manner that really supports all of our shared efforts. So the second topic for this section was energy goals and for resilience planning. So similar to House Bill 839, House Bill 401 has the potential to adjust the ways that local governments approach both internal and community energy and resilience goals. The design element of this bill has the potential to impact roofing requirements related to things like PV ready roofs, cool roofs, and other similar items. And more critically, the restrictions on the use of preliminary FEMA mapping could negatively impact the long-term resilience efforts by local municipalities, even ones that might be funded by other legislation from this session. So just wanting to ensure that we're supporting our community and protecting the health and safety of our citizens, which is both paramount for all of us. And I think the most important thing to consider in this is the process by which local government undertakes these efforts, particularly with planning and FEMA maps, and that our internal subject matter experts, I would say our community development and engineering staff specifically, have the real knowledge about how these things are used in a day-to-day manner within our organization. So we would just love to help facilitate the conversations between potentially your staff and some of our subject matter experts, so we can all be more successful in those proposals moving forward. And then the last item for today, for this sustainability and resilience section, is the Resilient Florida Trust Fund and statewide flooding and sea level resilience bills. So specifically Senate Bills 1954 and 2514. And I know that other staff members will speak more to this bill and its relation to the documentary stamp tax distribution, but just to take a closer look at this specifically, we'll start by saying we are applying to the planning section of this grant to help support the update of our sustainability and resilience plan. So we're definitely excited about that opportunity, and the overall focus on resilience in legislation this year is a critical need. We feel like it might be beneficial to also build off of this momentum moving into future sessions and help prioritize projects that have co-benefits with mitigation. So projects that are focused solely on resilience many times might ultimately contribute to more of the causes of emissions. So for example, if we just build a bunch of pumps to make sure that we're resilient to sea level rise, they consume energy and contribute to the initial problem. So how do we work towards establishing a closed loop? If a resilience effort creates a closed loop, it will be even more resilient than, say, an active pump without a microgrid or other potential project. It'd also be helpful to better understand how we're coordinating these efforts across the state. While water is certainly foundational to our state, we want to support continued expansion of other increasing threats to our residents, such as impact of heat on the health, safety, and well-being of our community. The initial data is indicating that heat may be just as, if not more impactful than sea level rise and flooding. So we know that the wonderful folks at DEP have quite a lot on their plate, so we would be interested in learning about the potential to have a more dedicated resilience lead at the state level that could serve as that kind of central spoke for all the increasing efforts that will, will take a lot of work to coordinate with all of these additional efforts. So with that, we'll close out this section, but I just want to mention that I think the continued theme for sustainability and resilience and a lot of the other efforts is that we are happy to invest the time and energy, literally and figuratively, so that we can plan our energy projects and resilience projects and ensure that we are well-aligned with each other. So with that, I will turn it back over to Chris.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Our next staff member is Cheryl Reed, Director of Community Development, and she'll be talking about home-based businesses, anonymous complaints, and affordable housing. Cheryl.
Thank you. So, good afternoon. I'm, as you probably noticed, in a different role today than I was previously. So as the Director of the Community Development Department, I wanted to say thank you very much to the Commission and to Representative Latvalla and Senator Brandis for joining us this afternoon. We wanted to just touch on a couple of bills that were passed this last session that are going to have some impact on the city and our operations and the residents and ultimately your constituents, so we just want to make sure that you understand what we're doing to respond to that new legislation. So the first one is the, the new bill on home-based businesses. The city of Largo actually uses a different term called Home Office of Convenience, and we have an ordinance that governs those types of activities in residential areas. We will be very shortly undertaking a rewrite of that ordinance so that we can come into compliance with the new state legislation. As you probably already know, that legislation was effective July 1st, as well as the, the next bill that we wanted to speak about, which was the anonymous complaints related to code enforcement. So that's one of our challenges is the, oftentimes the July 1st effective date that's happening right as the session is ending and as the governor is signing bills. That does make it difficult on occasion for us to respond quickly enough in terms of rewriting ordinances, updating codes, revising our, our operating procedures. And the anonymous complaints, I think, is a good one because we receive anonymous complaints related to code enforcement through a variety of methods. They come in through phone calls, they come in through a platform that we have on our website, they also come in through the mail, oftentimes anonymous, as you might imagine. We have a lot of elderly residents who may not be comfortable identifying themselves when they do have a neighboring property that they feel that there is a code violation occurring on that property. We oftentimes also have others, not just seniors, who for whatever reason may feel that they could be in a situation where the property owner that they're complaining about may in fact retaliate in some way. But we recognize that this is a legislation that we needed to immediately be able to respond to and, and stay in, in compliance with. Do you want to mention, I have Tracy Schofield here, our Community Standards Division Manager. So if at today or at some point in the future, if you have any questions and would like to engage on this topic or any related topics related to code enforcement and cities' roles in that, we would really welcome the opportunity to engage with you on that. So just wanted to, you know, let you know in terms of those two bills, again, we'll be working very quickly to try to, we've already revised our processes, we're already ensuring that we are not taking anonymous complaints. But it, you know, it, it does create somewhat of a challenge because we do have a lot of residents who would like the ability to be able to complain anonymously about, about a complaint. I'd like to also mention, Laura alluded to the documentary stamp tax distribution changes that were made. Quite honestly, this is a little bit of a bittersweet one for Largo. We, we certainly applaud, and you all, both of you know very well, that we've been advocating for the last four years very strongly that affordable housing is the city of Largo's number one legislative priority, both on the state level as well as the federal level. So this one is bittersweet. We're really appreciative of the fact that the decision has been made not to continue to sweep the trust funds. We would love to see the full amount of funding being available for affordable housing, but we do recognize that the state is facing, you know, multiple high priority issues that need to be addressed, and that one of the best ways to do that is to make funding available to local governments. And so to that end, we do appreciate the fact that this legislation will also open up some of the other opportunities that Laura talked about, and as she's already indicated, we will be looking to take advantage of those funding opportunities. So we do thank you for that. Let's move on to the next bill, which is the, the graywater incentives that were part of Senate Bill 64. And that one, I'm going to be perfectly frank and let you know that we, as well as other local governments in Pinellas County, were caught off guard a little bit. We were watching the other aspects of the bill, which I believe our engineering director is going to be addressing shortly, but did want to let you know that again, that, that is a bill that we are rapidly trying to get up to speed on so that we can ensure that we're in compliance. It does outline the opportunity to provide incentives for graywater technologies in residential buildings and does specifically provide the opportunity for density and intensity bonuses. We do have some concerns about how those kinds of incentives would work along with our other density and intensity bonuses, for instance, that we're trying to make available for affordable housing. Will they stack? How will that exactly work? How will Forward Pinellas, the countywide land use agency, how will we be working with them in that regards? So we have started those, you know, and actually it was the city of Largo has initiated some of those conversations about this particular section of this bill. So we'll be happy to, to report back in terms of how that's going moving forward. But we did want to let you know, again, those are another example of something that we're working on very quickly to get up to speed, to make sure that we're in compliance, that we're making those incentives available. And I wanted to close, if we could move to the next slide, wanted to just close with a proposed project, speaking of density bonuses for affordable housing. So this is a proposed project, over 200 units on Seminole Boulevard in the Largo Mall Activity Center. And I wanted to close with my section of the presentation with this project because it's a, it's a really good example of the type of project that cities like ourselves can do with the ship funding that's coming from the Sodowsky Act. It's unusual from the standpoint that typically a city of our size with the type of allocation, dollar amount that we typically receive, we normally would not be able to fund a project like this because we simply don't get enough funding. So that kind of goes back to my, my comments earlier about how important the ship funding is through the Sodowsky Housing Trust Fund to allow cities the size of Largo to be able to do affordable projects like this one here. We have a very unique set of circumstances. We have some additional payments on previous ship loans that are going to be coming in that are, that have been slowly accumulating, and that along with our new allocation, which again is very helpful to, to have a set amount of money each year that we can rely on, depend on, staff for, plan for. We do think we're going to be able to have sufficient funding to bring this project out of the ground. So I wanted to share that with you. These developers are in fact applying for tax credits from the sale program as well, and we're, we're crossing our fingers and toes that, that application will be favorably reviewed, and as, you know, you probably are seeing in other communities as well, we'll be layering a number of subsidies in order to be able to make a certain amount of units within this development, at least 15, available to low and moderate income households. So with that, I will step away, and again, thank you so much for being here this afternoon.
Can I ask you a quick question before we step away?
Yes.
Do you know what the total need for affordable housing is in Largo? I mean, do you have a sense of, you know, do we need 2,000 units, 7,000 units, 25,000 units? What is the, what's the, what's the, just for a better way to put it, like, what's the total addressable market?
That's a great question, and I know that you typically like to ask that question, and I must confess, I'm not prepared to answer it this afternoon. I will tell you that what we're seeing, what you're seeing presented in the media, we are seeing and feeling in terms of the response that we're getting from our residents. So there was a recent article in ABC Action News that talks about the rental rates in the mid-Pinelis area have gone up 21%. We are seeing that. We saw that particularly during the earlier phases of the pandemic when we were, we were the, when the city of Largo actually had funding to administer for rental assistance to try to keep households in their units. So we, we know that the, that the market here in Largo is getting very expensive, both on the residential side as well as on the homeownership side. We have down payment assistance money that is provided through the federal home grant. We literally are not able to have households in Largo apply for that funding because the cost of housing, of single-family homes in, in Largo has risen so high that it exceeds the amount that we can afford the, the property to meet the program guidelines. So I don't have specific numbers, but I can tell you that, that based on the pandemic, based on the type of redevelopment that we're seeing, the real estate market now, as you probably are both well aware, we do have a lot of older mobile home parks. We're seeing that development pressure again on those mobile home parks, and those are being redeveloped, they're being redeveloped as rental housing, which is great. Again, another opportunity where if we had more resources, particularly ship funding, we could be ensuring that we were able to work with those developers during the site plan review process and seek to have them reserve a certain number of affordable units in each of those new developments. We're doing that at, at every opportunity that we can. We're not necessarily, we're not providing them state funding or local funding to do that, but we are, you know, using our ability to provide density incentives as a way to get those units reserved for low and moderate families. So I can tell you that, that the need is, is great both on the rental side as well as the homeownership side.
I think density bonuses are probably the best way to go in many areas, just because it's simple and straightforward. It's a, it's a really a win-win for the city, it's a really win-win for the, for the residents as well.
Yes.
And so anything else we can do to incent, you know, continue to push density bonuses, I think are helpful. You know, I'm always a, a much more of a fan of vouchers than I am of, of the building, the actual buildings and making 100% of a building affordable because it creates other challenges too. One, you have to, you have to provide the transportation, and so we have to work to, to get that problem solved. Two, it decreases mobility. So these individuals typically will have to stay in that unit because they can't afford to leave that unit versus if we're having, giving them a voucher, we allow them to move closer to their job or closer to a school that's better for their kids. So, you know, I'm always on the, on the side of what else can we, you know, how can we help incentivize people by providing vouchers versus, versus building the actual structures themselves? But I think, you know, density bonuses, to me, I'm a big fan of that because I think it's a win-win for the developers and it's a big win-win for the residents.
So Senator, we had a conversation a few weeks ago at the Ford Pinellas meeting, the legislative meeting there, and I think the number that they were using at the time was about 1,000 units for Pinellas County per year is what, maybe I'm completely wrong on that, but that's the number that sticks in my head. And, and at that time, we talked, you know, you had the kind, started a conversation about the vouchers and, and, you know, I think it's very interesting. I would definitely like to continue to work with the legislature and Ford Pinellas and the city and see if that's something that we can expand on here because, you know, I think to your point, this, all of the ship money together, it does not cover the, will not cover the need.
Right.
So even if it's fully funded, which we obviously want to continue to have it fully funded, but if, even if it is fully funded every year, it's not going to cover the need. So, you know, there has to be other opportunities. We have to continue to work on that. So I think the, you know, continuing to expand and the conversation on the, of the vouchers and some of the other things that we can do is definitely something that we need to, to work together with. And, you know, I think, having, convincing some of our other partners in the legislature that that is something that we can do is probably going to be, you know, the yeoman's work on from, from the city side because, because unlike, you know, our partners in this room, not everybody agrees that that's, you know, some of the things that we need to be able to do. And when they send that ship money, obviously it's designated strictly to what it can, you know, what it can be used for. So, yeah, I just, I, you know, I think it's a good idea. I, I would love to continue to have that conversation and, and, you know, I don't know if, if you'd like to expand on that anymore to maybe bring everybody else up to speed on that, or maybe that's a better conversation for another day, but, you know, definitely.
Happy to spend a second on it. Like, I, I think at the end of the day, what we, the best thing the state could do with Sodowsky funds is send them down to the cities and counties as a block grant. We don't need to be deciding what color the drapes are or picking out siding colors or figuring out what size your window needs to be. The best thing we could do is send them down, you know, and, and then that would provide a sustainable source of funds for counties to know how to plan going forward versus the feast or famine model which we exercise today, which I think is, is not fair to really anybody. I'm not a fan of us going out and building, because I think if you asked the county what the real, the real addressable market is, it's probably tens of thousands of units that they really need. And yet if you looked at it over the last five years, what, how many units they physically built, it would probably be 500 or less. And so the delta continues to grow on what we need, and yet we see a lot more market-rate housing going up. And, and so to the extent that we can find a way to put residents in market-rate housing by bridging that delta with a voucher for them, it allows us not to have to pick out drape colors, but allows us to look simply at income and the need and meet that delta because people are often generating enough money to, to pay something. It isn't like they're totally indigent and not able to pay anything. So how do we meet that need? And then it provides other benefits by allowing them the flexibility to move where they really want to move within, within a range of, of rental rates, and we don't often have to solve then for the transportation problem or for the, for the school problem. They can move school districts, they can move towards, closer to their job, and, and we can solve multiple problems with one solution versus sometimes creating problems by getting them in a, in a residential unit that they literally can't move from because it's rent controlled. them in a residential unit that they literally can't move from because it's rent controlled.
I know Cheryl touched on this briefly, but I think this is an important thing, and I always talk about this when you start talking about affordable housing, because I think three of the four largest senior mobile home parks in the county, I'm talking about nice mobile home parks, are in the city of Largo. So that's a, that's a decent proportion of our affordable housing stock. It's senior affordable housing, and the long-term, you know, some of these are owned by the owners, which those aren't going away, not in my lifetime, which I think is a good thing. Also, when, when there's a name storm coming towards Pinellas County, 100% of those people have to move, have to go somewhere else. They have to evacuate. They become a problem twice, three times a year, sometimes less, sometimes more. So how can we get from, I don't know, and I don't know what the answer is. I kind of think it'd be nice to be able to instantly turn those into sustainable, like mini-home type things, or what are those called? Tiny homes?
Tiny homes.
Like the same type of footprint, but, but a building that you don't have to leave, like something that's not going to blow away when we get 80 mile an hour winds. So I think that could be, that's a conversation that nobody really wants to have, at least I haven't found anybody that wants to talk to me about it. But what do we do with 2,500 senior affordable housing units that have to be evacuated whenever there's a name stormed right, or a storm right now? There's probably actually more than that. I think there's 1,000 just in Palm Hill. So it's probably significantly more than that. But all those people, and they're going to be getting more and more permanent residents, less and less just snowbird type situations where they're not here in the summertime. So that's going to continue to be an issue, and I think that there's some solutions that would make a lot, I think would make a lot of sense if they could build a block structure on that same footprint. Can't do that right now, at least not in our parks. So, and I don't know what the state would have to do with that, but I think that's an important affordable housing thing. Those, the people who live in there, they want to have their, their little spot. It doesn't have to be big, it doesn't have to be fancy. It'd be nice, in my opinion, if it didn't blow away. So, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Our final staff presentation is going to be our Director of Engineering Services, Jerry Walazinski, who will be talking about reclaimed water and the Clear Waterways Act.
Well, thank you, Chris, for that introduction. Good afternoon, Senator Brandis. Good afternoon, Representative LaValle, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Jerry Walazinski, the Director of Engineering here at the city of Largo. I'm honored to be here this afternoon to give you some highlights of recent legislation that addresses water quality and water resources. Over the course of the last two sessions, we've witnessed several pieces of legislation that had the potential to vastly improve water quality in Florida. The city of Largo is very excited to play a role in this opportunity to improve water quality in our local waterways and water bodies. Along with that excitement comes with some concerns about our fiscal ability to meet those deadlines contained in those pieces of legislation. So for instance, you heard Cheryl talk a little bit about Senate, sorry. So for instance, in last year's 2020 session, the Senate Bill 712 passed the Florida Clean Waterways Act. The rulemaking for that act through the Department of Environmental Protection is ongoing. We expect the rulemaking to be in place somewhere around the end of this calendar year. One of those proposed draft rules is for the city to evaluate 25% of its sewer, sanitary sewer collection system. The good news is we proactively started this exact scenario in 2018, so we're well ahead of that power curve. The only challenge is when we have to condense and accelerate the evaluation of 25% of our collection system within a five-year period, it really throws off what had been a nice methodical plan where we balanced out our fiscal needs for, you know, SSO, sanitary sewer reduction, high inflow and infiltration abatement against the other competing needs of our wastewater program. So it's a wonderful piece of legislation. Again, it contributes towards eliminating sanitary sewer overflows in our communities, hence improves our local water bodies, but it's the acceleration aspect that really helped, makes us have to think about what else do we have to forego to do this acceleration when we were going to be doing it all along over a course of a few more years. So again, don't want to criticize it, but there is a stacking effect to some of this legislation. So that stacking effect also helps or challenges us to comply with Senate Bill 64. With Senate Bill 64, we're asked to submit to the Department of Environmental Protection by November 1st of this year, a plan to, that demonstrates how we will eliminate all of our wastewater effluent surface water discharge completely with a couple of exemptions by January 1st of 2032. That's essentially 10 years away. We currently discharge Old Tampa Bay, and we're excited about the prospect of having no nutrient load going to Tampa Bay. That does an exciting prospect. It's exciting of the, the prospects of what that will do for improved water quality. However, the, the cost of compliance is significant to eliminate our surface water discharge, and it has that overlapping effect with that acceleration of the Clean Waterway Act rulemaking.
Does it require that you do it, or does it require that you plan for it?
It requires that we have a plan in, on November 1st, and it's in compliant, fully compliant by January 1st, 2032. So again, wonderful opportunity, wonderful to see that take place across the state of Florida. It's going to have a profound improvement on water quality. It can do nothing less than that. The challenge to us is, you know, this bill and other bills that have a fiscal component to it will be on the back of our ratepayers, you know, and on top of that, it could be a challenging condition during this COVID-19 economy, so.
What's your, what's your ballpark estimate of the cost?
We believe it's five years of wastewater revenue, so about $25 million.
Gotcha.
So, and I'll talk to, on the positive side of it, the legislation spoke highly to and encouraged municipalities that our water management districts would give priority opportunities to municipalities for grants, 50/50 matching grants, or they're very, very attractive grants for those communities that could find potable reuse opportunities for reclaimed water. This heavily favors local governments that A, operate their own potable water utility and have a wastewater utility to find that match, or for those communities that have a neighboring community that would have a potable water utility that you can match up reclaim reuse with that utility. We do plan to pursue these grants, but we expect that we're going to have a low priority because right now we lack a potable reuse component to some of the ideas we're thinking while proposing to DEP. So it is a very nice piece of legislation offering that grant opportunity, but it certainly favors those municipalities that have a reuse opportunity, and they're rewarded for that. I'll talk a little bit about and play further on along Cheryl's idea, that bittersweet scenario with the Sodowsky Trust Fund Act. If we understand correctly, some of those funds provide us an opportunity for some septic-to-sewer grants provided by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. We've been waiting for this opportunity for several years. Engineering staff and environmental services staff have been inventorying our septic systems in the city of Largo. We have about 300 of them, and one of our challenge is, and we, we know where some of the, the easier opportunities to extend our wastewater collection system is to, to some of those 300, and that's where we see the groupings that we've created for the cost benefit of those 300. The challenge we have with that, because they are matching grants, we may need to forego this grant opportunity because we need to conserve the matching grant side to fund things like Senate Bill 64, like Florida Clean Waterways Act. And we're somewhat disappointed because we planned so much to be, we, we watched how yours and Governor DeSantis's effort has been moving on septic-to-sewer, starting in the protective springs areas and then expanding outward. We've been waiting for this opportunity to come along, and then the stacking effects of these other legislations may have us forego that. However, the optimistic side hopefully is if there is a future federal infrastructure funding opportunity for us, we may be able to use some of that federal opportunity to save some of our own wastewater enterprise funds to put towards this grant opportunity for septic-to-sewer, but there's a lot of moving parts to, to make all of that align correctly. But again, bittersweet, we would like to be able to take advantage of it. And then in closing, not necessarily a water quality issue, but House Bill 53 asks us to write a 20-year fiscal plan that assesses our needs for both our stormwater collection system and our wastewater treatment program by June 30th, 2022. While it doesn't necessarily have a fiscal stacking effect, the same very high qualified staff around the city of Largo that need to be writing these plans are the same highly qualified staff that need to write the plan to DEP for the Senate Bill 64. They need to be the same exact people writing the compliance, five-year plan, compliance for the Florida Clean Waterways Act. Could we choose to hire consultants to help us write those plans? We certainly could, but again, more fiscal driver to complete all of this, all stacking up in probably about a 16-month timeframe. So we got the fiscal concerns, then just the product concerns. What we would like to be able to do, we want to provide the highest quality fiscal plan we can, but we, there wasn't enough in the legislation to have an insight on what these fiscal plans would be used for. So our plans that we write could be a higher quality product if we knew the why behind it, so we can anticipate that and shape the information in it to really benefit those that, that scripted the legislation. So with that, that's my final topic. I welcome any, any feedback or discussion on those topics.
My only feedback would be, you know, I think the statute's designed to be changed. So to the extent that you have recommendations for how we can modify statute to make it easier for the city to comply, or to eliminate or mitigate that stacking effect, we'd be happy to look at that and entertain that.
For us, it would be like on the Senate Bill 64 side, with the compliance deadline of January 1st, 2032, an extension, any extension to that would be highly welcome.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I invite any of the commission or representatives to, to bring up any topics that are pressing to them, or you think that are important to us.
I hope I'm phrasing this correctly. On the gray water legislation, which I think is wonderful, I'm a big proponent of gray water, gray water use and the proper use of that. The legislation, as, as I read it, allows for a 35% density bonus if, if a development of over 25 units, I believe, is 100% gray water, which is, you know, a very generous density bonus. However, here in the city, we have, I think, a maximum of a 25% density bonus for affordable housing, and, you know, based on the, on the percentage of units. So the question that I asked, and I really, you know, there are some answers, but I don't think they're complete answers, is, is that a stackable bonus, which would, which would get up to a 60% density bonus, which is pretty intense? Or, or in lieu of that, would a developer who is looking at this say, well, I can get 35% density bonus or putting in gray water and have everything at market rate, which of course would be more profitable to me rather than, you know, building affordable housing and a 25% bonus? So I think Cheryl mentioned some of the concern about the stackable, the stackability, and I don't have an answer. We don't have an answer to that yet, and we'd love to get an answer and interpretation so we could know how to proceed. I don't think that anything would predict or forecast a 60% density bonus. That's getting tough. And, but we don't know, we don't know what the direction is, and I'm hoping that, you know, somebody can get back with Chris or Cheryl or whatever and let us know exactly how, how that would work.
Yeah, I think that's a question really for the, for the attorneys to wrestle with from both the state, the, you know, I don't think Representative LaValle or I drafted that language. So we would need, we would need the attorneys to get involved and decide.
Yeah, we asked, we asked our city attorney, he came back with, you know, ideas, you know, but, but nothing definitive, so.
The vouchers would take care of that problem.
Well, I, you know, I was going to mention that, exactly, you know, vouchers would.
They could reduce the water bills.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. I think vouchers is a wonderful idea if we can make them all work, yeah.
Moving into the last part of our agenda today, this is our looking forward portion of the agenda, priorities and update for 2022. What's the chatter in Tallahassee? What can we expect upcoming for the session?
Well, I think every session has a different theme. Sometimes you don't know that theme, like in 2018, for instance, we didn't know that our session was going to be defined, or how it was going to be defined until February 14th of 2018, when, when there was a tragic shooting that killed 17 people at Marbury Stoneman Douglas High School. You know, last year, of course, was COVID. This year, you know, I think it could be a number, a number of things in, looking at it broadly, but certainly the issue of redistricting is going to take up a lot of our time. It's a, something that we do every 10 years, and so, you know, that will take up a lot of time in the, either probably before, during, and after session. And I have the honor of serving as the Education and Employment Chair for the Speaker in the House, so I'm responsible for everything, starting in early education up through the workforce boards and workforce issues. And last year, we passed two big bills that kind of spanned both of the spectrums. One was something that's probably important to at least one of the commissioners, Commissioner Smith, and that is literacy, a bill that we did to try to expand third grade literacy. And under the Speaker's leadership and direction, we're going to be partnering with school districts and nonprofits to send books into the homes of struggling and low-income readers across the state of Florida to try to bring up those third grade scores because 88% of high school dropouts are falling behind reading when they're in the third grade. And so if you don't get them young, then, you know, they just keep falling further and further behind. And so there's still work to be done in the literacy space. There's going to be some higher ed issues I foresee. Something else that we spent a lot of our time on that's probably important to Pinellas County is the workforce accountability bills that we did, House Bill 1505 and 1507. County, is the workforce accountability bills that we did, House Bill 1505 and 1507. And that was the result of some issues that happened in the workforce boards in Pinellas County a few years ago, where people were, they were saying that these people were getting jobs, but there was no evidence of that. Well, you know, certainly there were issues specific to Pinellas County and specific to that one incident, that, you know, where there's missing funds and so forth, but what we found was that there was a lot of workforce boards around the state of Florida that could not tell us how many people were getting jobs, how many women, how many minorities, how many veterans. And these are things that, you know, they should have at the tip of their tongue. And so we did a workforce accountability bill this year, and I think that next year we will continue to look into that.
Senator Brandis, anything to add?
Look, I think, I think Representative LaValle is correct. I think that, you know, obviously, redistricting and budget are going to be two major issues that are playing on everybody's minds. I think there is a lot of fixed capital out of resources available in this year's budget, not so much nonrecurring revenue available in this year's budget. I think the priority issues for Pinellas County over the last decade really have been transportation, jobs, insurance, education. And I think we're going to continue to see those, these themes continue to play out. I think the most critical need in the short term is probably in the insurance front. What we're seeing throughout the marketplace, and highlighted by the storm that just hit Louisiana, a lot of those Louisiana insurers are actually Florida-based insurance companies. And so I'm very concerned about the state of the Florida insurance market. I think you're seeing rising rates. It's not uncommon to see 20%, 30% rate increases. That is ultimately the Achilles' heel of the Florida insurance, of the Florida real estate market. I think they're somewhat hidden today by lower interest rates. People are being able to refinance to lower rates, but eventually that catches up to them. And so I don't want us to find ourselves in three years with our property insurance rates doubling in the state of Florida. I think we've got to come back and revisit property insurance legislation. I think we've got to figure out how to make a sustainable model. Just to give you one example, I use citizens' property insurance as a barometer for the health of the Florida insurance market. When we started session, they were bringing in, they were bringing in 3,000 policies a week into citizens, understanding that, that over the last five, over the last 10 years, we've gone from 1.5 million policies in citizens to a low of about 500,000 policies in citizens. And so there was, there was a significant period of time where we were shedding thousands of policies a week. Now, at the beginning of session, we're growing at 3,000 policies a week. Two months ago, we were growing at 6,000 policies a week. And last week, we grew at 8,300 policies a week. So we're seeing ourselves on a parabolic rise again, could be back over a million policies by, you know, the middle of next year. That is a challenge to the state. It is a huge liability to every Floridian, because truly, citizens is backed by the citizens of the state, and something we need to be very cognizant of as lawmakers. And frankly, you need to be cognizant of, because it's going to absolutely affect your housing, but one, affordability, two, transferability. Because if you don't, if you remember back to 2012, 2013, the feds, in their infinite wisdom, passed the Bridger Waters Act, which overnight made flood insurance actuarially sound. Unfortunately, what that meant for the residents that occupied Pinellas County was that rates went from some paying $1,000 a year in flood insurance to paying $12,000 a year. I had residents calling my house, calling my office, saying, where do I send my keys? Because I can't afford my flood insurance, I'm paying more in flood insurance than I'm paying in premium, in mortgage. So it is a top-of-mind issue, and should be, Florida is a really dynamic real estate market, but it's only that way because you can conduct those transactions with a reasonable set of insurances, that you can get property insurance. And if that all ends up flooding back into citizens, and we're back to 1.5, 2 million policies again, that is, that's a catastrophic scenario if there's a large storm for the state, because it'd ultimately be a tax on every Floridian. I think to your point about electric vehicles today, Florida, electric vehicles represent less than 1% of vehicles on Florida's roads. But by most industry estimates, we're looking at 25% to 50% of, 15% to 25% of all new cars sold being in 2030 will be electric. We have to be thinking about that, and that will have massive ramifications for land use, it will have lasting ramifications for a number of your businesses, and ultimately have massive ramifications for, for the utilities in a grid that we will have to sustain that. So we need to be thinking about that, and I think you're smart to be thinking about it today, and making those adjustments today. And even if you, you know, talking to apartment developers and other developers, you know, talking to them about just stubbing out for electric, I think is really smart, and is part of that conversation. So, you know, if we think about, you know, transportation, that's kind of the big story of transportation over the next decade, will be the shift to electrification and thinking about that. You know, on the education front, I think Florida is as far forward as any state in the country, offering choice to students. And I think we're starting to see that being reflected in the overall school grades, schools doing better, the perception of Florida's K-12 system is obviously getting better. I think our college, our higher ed system is already very well thought of around the country, and we're, you know, the legislature's focusing on continuing that conversation. And on the jobs front, you know, really, I think the jobs question more so is in a question actually of market, market rate housing, workforce housing, and the ability to fund, you know, the infrastructure of tourism and other jobs that we have available here in the county. If Pinellas County becomes all residents from up north moving down here that are snowbirds and retirees, but there's nobody to work at the beaches, there's nobody to work at the hospitals, there's nobody to work at, you know, at the manufacturing facilities that we have, that creates other sets of challenges and disruptions that we need to be thinking about. So I think you're, you know, what I've seen from Largo is a commitment to focus on market rate housing wherever possible, and I think that's going to pay real dividends down the road, where, you know, your downtown is changing, it's exciting to see what's going on down there. But I think that continued commitment to market rate housing, and whatever we can do to incentivize and encourage more market rate, market rate housing, I think is important. Because ultimately, we, you know, we can't, you know, I always think of dealing with housing as kind of a triangle, and if you, if you don't think about all portions of that triangle, what happens is the people at the top, who are the wealthiest, end up pushing out the people in the middle, the people in the middle end up pushing out the people at the bottom, and the people at the bottom get pushed out completely. And there, so we need to be thinking about kind of all layers of that triangle to make sure that there's, there's space at every area, because without it, it will naturally compact down. So, you know, it's, I think, to kind of circle back on what this year is going to look like, look, it's an election year, it's a gubernatorial election year. I think there's going to be less major bills passed this year than there was last year. I think it's probably safe to say that. But I think we have got to deal with some of these critical issues. And, you know, my continued push on the insurance front, I'll continue to push on the criminal justice reform front, as you've seen what happened in the last two weeks with the prison system in Florida. And we're going to continue to push on the mobility front and the transportation front. We're still looking to continue, continuing to look for better east-west corridors here in Pinellas County. The Gateway Express will be open here in the next year or so. That's exciting. That will really open up the county on a north-south basis, will allow you to go from the Sunshine Skyway Bridge to the north of Countryside Mall without a stoplight. And I, so I think it's, how do we continue to work with the county and you all to look at east-west corridors and try to make those more efficient?
A question about, what do you think the answer is to how the home insurance? Is it legislation that reduces, aims to reduce claims?
I think it's tort reform.
So essentially.
And fraudulent claims. You know, I think if you look at what's happened in Florida, it started as water claims in South Florida that has metastasized into
Roof claims.
Roof claims in central Florida. And the kind of the next shoe to drop is going to be lead pipe claims, which will again start in South Florida and then metastasize around the state. But the roof claims, the abundance of roof claims, the contractors coming to your house, or people coming to your house and saying, let me give you a $500 gift card to get up on your roof and let you sign this piece of paper, and we'll take care of it with your insurance company, and they don't realize that what they've done is now hired an attorney to sue their insurance company to fix their roof. And it doesn't take you long to realize that, you know, we're not going to give out a whole bunch of $500 gift cards without finding something. And so this, this cycle of people with 20-year-old roofs getting brand-new roofs, when their roof's really at the end of their useful life, and it really was on them to fix it. Insurance is meant for catastrophic events, not for home maintenance and repair. And if we start thinking of it out as a maintenance contract and not a catastrophic insurance contract, then all of a sudden, the fundamental nature of the insurance product is shifted. And so what, and ultimately, you and I are paying for our neighbors' roofs.
Right. Yeah. Literally, in some cases.
Literally, yeah. You're paying for it in installments on an annual basis.
Representative LaValle, you've mentioned the reading literacy. I didn't see like the fine print of that last year. What's the target age of the kids if you're going to get books in the hands of those families?
K through five, but a lot of studies and a lot of education experts and people smarter than I will say that you have to get kids even younger than, than that, even before kindergarten, and starting really as infants.
Yeah, I totally agree.
And start reading to them then, so that when they start school, they're, they're ready. And so we're, we're going to be partnering with libraries, and nonprofits are going to be partnering with libraries and do some reading boot camps, so parents know how to read to their kids, and know how to, you know, get their, their kids a passion for reading and for learning, because that critical age is third grade.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that, Representative LaValle, and as working in a library, that is, the driving force that we want to see, if things get a library card, when we see a kid can get a library card, the driving force there gets them to read. So it's reading to a child, but at the same time, exciting, getting them excited into reading. So we're working off that, I think, as a great opportunity, where you're getting the books there and getting them to read, but continuing it by finding passion.
Absolutely. Yeah, and getting kids, you know, out from, in front of the TV and into a library.
We heard some good presentations today from staff members, and as you can tell, we have a lot of institutional knowledge here in the city, and we want to offer that knowledge to you and be a resource for you in the future. And our question for you today is, how can we be a better resource for you moving forward on legislation that affects cities?
Well, I think Largo does a pretty good job at that. Cheryl certainly did a wonderful job when she was the intergovernmental relations coordinator, so you have big shoes to fill. She, she would text us or email us all the time, whether it was before session or during session. The vice mayor has a space outside my office that he camps out at, because he's in Tallahassee so much, and he knows where my snack cabinet is and where my mini fridge is.
Telling all the secrets, man.
Yeah, so it's, you know, showing up is important, and Largo shows up. You know, and I'm not exaggerating that the Vice Mayor Robinson probably is in Tallahassee three or four weeks out of a session, which is almost half the time. The mayor talks to the delegation regularly, the other commissioners do as well. And so it's, you know, I don't think you necessarily need to do anything new, just keep doing what you're doing, you know, and, and it's important to let us know when you have a budget projects that we can be helpful on, and certainly issues that are important to the city.
And I'll just add, you know, I think, I think it's important that when we talk about problems, that we also talk about solutions. Right? And I think, you know, we're, we're normal, we're very used to having the problems thrust at us and told, you solve it. Unfortunately, the, the volume of those problems makes it impossible for us to kind of come up with concepts to solve every one of them and do the research to solve every one of them. So I think it's very important that when you, when you all clearly identify a problem, you bring us a solution. And it can be formally bringing a solution, and it can be informally bringing a solution, but, or just kicking around an idea of how to solve this problem. It might be, hey, look, we need a 10-year delay on that date, or, you know, we need some adjustment and some clarity next year on, on, are these, are these issues stackable? Or what was the legislative intent behind that? Because what may have happened is, the person that ran that piece of legislation had no clue that there was another piece of legislation that was implemented 10 years ago that offered additional density bonuses, and it's very likely to be the case. So I would just ask that anytime that we talk about a problem, we have, you know, solution A, B, and C that go along with it, and, and that we can work through that. But I, again, I think the city of Largo actually does better than the larger cities of Pinellas County at engaging the legislature on a more, on a proactive basis than, than almost any other area I've seen around the state.
Yeah, absolutely. I would definitely concur with that.
I think that by, you know, having this relationship and being able to, you know, show up at your office and say, hey, this is what's going on, you know, by having that relationship and having those conversations, you know, outside of these formal conversations, we've, I think, realized that, to your point, where we need to be able to bring a solution. We can't just say, don't do this, this is not going to work for us. So I'm proud of what our, what we've been able to do, what our staff's been able to do, and working with you and your guys' staff as far as, when it comes to that. You know, there's, we're always not going to agree, there's going to be things that, that, you know, might affect the city that you guys want to see happen and we don't want to see happen, but we've, I think, over the last couple of years in particular, been able to come with either, you know, suggested legislation, or, you know, maybe amendments, or something that we can say, you know, we can talk about, and so, you know, to make it, you know, easy for everybody. So I definitely appreciate the fact that we've been able to do that. And, you know, kind of to expand on that a little bit, it's unfortunately going to be the both of your last session this year, so we're going to have to train a whole new group coming in in the next, you know, in a year or so. So, you know, that hopefully is not as tough as it sounds like it's, or hopefully, it's not as tough as it sounds like it's going to be, but, yeah, I definitely appreciate the fact that we're able to have those conversations, like, you know, that I'm able to just call you guys up and say, hey, I'm in town, you know, let me get a flight up to Tallahassee, or whatever that might be.
Or like, what are you thinking?
Well, yeah.
And, and don't get me wrong, whenever I say that the vice mayor is camping outside my office, sometimes it's not to tell me what a great job I'm doing. It's, you know, usually to tell me that I could be voting better on a bill, or to try to change my mind on something, which is important and needed.
Well, yeah, I mean, but it's, you know, again, it goes back to being able to do the relationship that we've, we've all, you know, worked on over the past few years. And I know, you know, we've all kind of came in around the same time, and being able to work on those relationships and have the conversation to do what we're able to do to whatever we feel is the best for the, for the residents that we all represent, right? So I appreciate the openness of you guys, as well as our other delegates, but for sure, appreciate everything that we've been able to work on, and, you know, all of your guys' staff as well. I mean, everybody has been very, you know, works great. From the, from, you know, every, in all, in all aspects, and I mean, some of them don't even work for you anymore, and still call me up and
True.
Tell me what I'm supposed to be doing. So, yeah, good job, everybody.
Is there anything that we've discussed today or didn't discuss that we might collaborate with you on in the future? That you can think of?
Well, I think it's, like, I think, you know, bring us your top three issues, you know, let us, let us, and kind of your proposed solutions for what those are. And I think it's important that we always understand what's top of mind for you all here and your residents, that we understand, you know, what's, what's driving the conversation over the last few months. Usually, it's going to be transportation, it's going to be housing, it's going to be those types of issues. But, you know, we're here to work with you all to help solve those problems, and bring the resources, if we can, to bear to help solve them. And so, you know, I think it's always important that you be reminding us, kind of, here's our top three issues, and let us continue to work through those.
Yeah, absolutely, and having solutions is important. As was mentioned, it's our last session in Tallahassee, and, you know, the, the most important thing that I've ever done as a state representative, and will do as a state representative, the city of Largo, was instrumental in helping me accomplish, especially your police department and your police chief, Undestad, and that was the Jordan's Law. And I never would have passed that without the, the help of the, of the police department and their expertise.
Any questions from anyone else? Our guests have any questions for staff members?
Would you be interested in, our staff wrote us up, we had a memo that came out after session of the bills that would impact the city of Largo, would you all be interested in seeing what we saw of what those bills would do?
Sure.
I'd love our staff, if we can get I'd love our staff, if we can get that to them, that would help, just kind of put us on the same page and everything, so. And find solutions where if you may see something in there that we may have missed, or something like that. So, thank you.
I just, I just have one thing on my list of topics that wasn't discussed, so I'm just going to mention it. But, but it was touched on a little bit. We have, I think everybody in this, in this commission has a real desire to, to work towards better water quality in Tampa Bay, and reduced surface water outflow of our treated wastewater. As you all probably know, about half of our treated wastewater goes out in Old Tampa Bay. You may not know this, but for the first time in, I think, 20 years, the seagrass number, number has gone down in Tampa Bay, and specifically, Old Tampa Bay. I think that part of it is, I mean, our wastewater, or our effluent hasn't increased. We've done a ton of things to reduce surface water discharges. I think we're way ahead of many other cities in the area and that, in that realm. Yet, yet, we also want to do what we can to improve the water quality. With, and when you look at the geography of where the biggest reduction of seagrass beds is, it's, it's just inland of the Howard Franklin Bridge on the west, on the western shoreline, which, which, I hate to say this, but it's pretty close to where we put treated wastewater. But it's also in an area that's a relative dead zone as far as flow. I know the state is building, redoing the Howard Franklin Bridge. I know that they had real, real vast improvements in water quality on the other side of the Courtney Campbell Causeway by increasing, like, building a, a new place for water to go in and out of. And I'm curious if the DOT has looked at that on the westerns part of that Howard Franklin Causeway, to help solve that problem?
That's, I would have to ask DOT.
Okay.
I'd have to ask the DOT.
All right. They weren't at the meeting that I talked about last time, so. But I'd appreciate you checking on that. I, I think that, you know, if you look at the flow models, the water just kind of gets stuck there, just does this, you know, and the rest of the tide goes in and out. So, every year, there's an area that, there's an algae bloom in that area. It's not always red tide, but there's an algae bloom right there, right now. And that reduced water quality and increased turbidity causes all the seagrass to die. So, a lot of that area is now attached algae, which is a little bit better than nothing, but it's not nearly as good as seagrass, so. So, thank you. That was on my one list. Anything else?
Yeah, I don't, nothing, not just more of a, again, a comment to, to say thank you guys for, for the last few years, because you've really done great things for, I think, Pinellas County in general, and Largo in particular, as well as all the other work you've done around the state. You have done a good job of, of really, you know, helping to build these relationships and, and, you know, understanding what we need here in Largo. So, I just want to say thank you for that. And also, just wanted to get on the record real quick, that prior to the start of the meeting, the senator said I could call him up and get a flight to Tallahassee this year, so I'll drive every week. So, we'll, I just want to make sure that everybody saw that, is it on tape?
He can buy your flight, and I'll buy your barbecue.
All right, all right, well, I'm down, you got it. So, thank you guys.
I know how much you eat, so I'm getting the better into that deal.
I guess one other thing that I wanted to touch on, I know, I know that the state legislature is a partisan legislator, and legislature, and we're nonpartisan here in the City of Largo. And I really appreciate both of y'all, your ability to depart from the part, the rest of the party, if it makes sense. I can think of several examples. Each of you have done that in the last several years, and I appreciate that, as, as somebody that sits on a nonpartisan board, but sometimes we deal with partisan issues, it's pretty rare. I appreciate you guys just doing what you think is right, even if it's opposite of what I think is right. So, so I appreciate that from you, and thank you for that. Anything else before we close it down? Thank you so much for doing this. We probably won't invite you next year.
Too big done for them.
We'll have you come back right after the session.
There you go.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.